Yes, Mr. Williams.
My Lord, before I launch into my sixth submission, Mr. Hunter mentioned before lunch that I may have given the impression that Mr. Gibbs, the council's planning witness, gave evidence at the inquiry. If I did give that impression, I didn't mean to. He didn't. I just wanted to correct that in case I inadvertently misheard. Sixth proposition is found in paragraph fifty-nine of my skeleton at page sixteen. It's that the criminal cases on which the appellate relies, the Aylesbury and Cornish, are of little, if any, relevance. And they do not establish, I say them by analogy, the principles to be applied in planning cases in respect of the order costs. And Mr. Hunter continues to rely on Cornish and Aylesbury for a number of propositions, but particularly for the proposition, this is found in paragraph fifty-one of his skeleton, "The parties to a planning inquiry are entitled to assume that the expert's view is at least reasonable unless there is some obvious flaw in that evidence." And it was pleaded in the saving facts and grounds some time ago now, because there's a lot of procedural ramblings in this case, on a similar basis that a party to a planning inquiry was entitled to rely on the expert evidence unless that evidence was plainly wrong. And for your note, that's page one-eight-one of the core bundle. I say that there are three critical points of distinction between cost awards in criminal cases, and particularly these cases, and cost award in a planning context, which means that it is, they can often only be distinguished, but it's inapposite to apply those principles in this case. The first critical point of distinction, and the most important one, is that the test for costs and the policy objective underlying that test is very different. As this court is very familiar, the test for awarding costs in those cases was established by section nineteen of the Prosecution of Offences Act in nineteen eighty-five and the regulations made under it. And the question, in essence, was whether there had been impropriety, not merely unreasonableness. Just to make good for that proposition, we can pick up very, however quickly we may, Justice Lord Colson's judgment in the Cornish case, tab six of the authorities' bundle. If we skip to page eighty-one, we can see the statutory power for awarding costs and the test set out there within, the key words being "as a result of an unnecessary or improper act or omission." If we then turn on to page eighty-five and paragraph sixteen, my Lord, Justice Colson set out very helpful principles that were derived from the case law, the criminal case law that she had surveyed.
Which paragraph?
It's paragraph sixteen.
Sixteen.
And I draw it to your attention in particular, sixteen C. The test is one of impropriety, not merely unreasonableness. The conduct of prosecution must be starkly improper. There's actually no great investigation into the fact that this process is necessary to establish it. Just for your note, in Aylesbury, the divisional court agreed with that formulation. There had been some judicial controversy over the precise standard. But in paragraph twenty-eight, tab seven of the original paragraph twenty-eight, for your note, the divisional court agreed with the proposition that the test is in propriety, not merely unreasonableness. Now, of course, the test in planning inquiries is unreasonableness for the constitution maker to determine. But it's important to see how the propositions that were advanced, both in Cornish and Aylesbury, were coloured, and I don't mean that in any pejorative sense, but coloured by the test to which they were applying. So, for instance, if one goes forwards in Cornish to page eighty-six and paragraph twenty-four, under the heading "unnecessary or improper act or omission", paragraph twenty-four, my Lord, Justice Colson identified, very final sentence on the page eighty-six, the key issue in the costs matter there, is in capexes this, the issue is whether, at the time of the decision to prosecute, May 2015 or any time thereafter, it was starkly apparent to prosecution, sorry, it was starkly apparent that the prosecution was doomed to fail. And then we move on in this judgment to, for instance, paragraph thirty-two, where my Lord came to the conclusion, and of course, my Lord was the trial judge in this matter, at the last sentence, he did not think that the evidence given by Professor Hopkins in that case could be characterised, so I'm paraphrasing here, as being plainly wrong. Or the Crown should have known it to be plainly wrong. That is clearly a standard, the plainly wrong standard, which derives from the test of impropriety, or is least informed by that test of impropriety. Just going back, sorry, I should have made the point when we go back to paragraph sixteen, I apologize, I should have made that point four. We look at the propositions at sixteen E and F.
Yes.
Sixteen E really indicates the policy bases for the high threshold of costs. And that is to ensure that section nineteen applications are not used to attack decisions to prosecute by way of collateral challenge. The court must be ever vigilant to avoid any temptation to impose too high burden or stand on public prosecuting authority. Again, entirely different policy reasons underpinning the cost regime in the planning context. That matters, because then if one goes on to, in Aylesbury, at tab seven, to what the judge said at paragraph, for instance, twenty-three, and at twenty-four, they were both coloured by the test that was applicable to apply. So, for instance, at the bottom of paragraph twenty-four, when it said, "Once the expert in this case had given his opinion that the image in question was accessible, there was nothing, just a need to interrogate the expert, or that he was plainly wrong in a way that should have been obvious to the Crown." The court is clearly applying that higher threshold. There is, in my submission, no freestanding principle that parties to litigation are entitled to rely on their expert evidence unless that expert evidence is plainly wrong, or, in the way that is put by my lone friend, is there some obvious flaw in it. That proposition is one that derives from the high standard of impropriety that is needed to be demonstrated in order to achieve costs against the Crown in those cases.
Would you agree, though, that in a planning, in the planning context, where the one's talking about an applicant for planning permission law or an objector, an expert has an expertise which that party doesn't have, hence the need to instruct him?
Potentially with this caveat, yes, with this caveat, that one of the distinctions, of course, between planning inquiries and court cases, including civil court cases and charges, is that planning inspectors are often appointed precisely because of their expertise, and they may well have expertise in the area that the
Certainly.
that the expert is giving evidence in. They sometimes do, they sometimes don't.
Yes.
But often, when the case raises particular issues of, say, architectural and design or heritage, then the inspector will have particular expertise, if not qualifications, in that area. With that caveat, I accept that proposition, my Lord, that parties ordinarily wouldn't have that evidence. But that goes back to my basic point, that actually in most section seventy-eight appeals, planning appeals and court inquiries, where the planning merits are being debated, the evidence is invariably given by expert evidence. So I do say that that distinction alone demonstrates not only that these cases have limited value, but actually it would be improper to use them to impose a standard applicable to planning inquiries, or to say that because Mr. Parsons did not apply that standard, that there was demonstrable flaw in his reasoning. The second, the second and third distinctions are less important, but they are still relevant. The second distinction is that, in the criminal cases that we're dealing with, the court was exercising its original jurisdiction on costs, whereas here, of course, the court's exercising a supervisory jurisdiction only. And in Cornish, for instance, paragraphs forty-three to fifty.
Just, just hold on a minute. Is that right? It's right in Cornish, but is it right in Aylesbury? That was a supervisory jurisdiction, wasn't it?
It was an appellate jurisdiction.
JR of a magistrate's decision.
Yeah, yeah, that's, sorry, my Lord, that's, that's right, sorry. But the original judge in Aylesbury, I should have been clear on that, was exercising an original jurisdiction, having heard the evidence. The appeal court in Aylesbury said he went wrong, or she went wrong, in law.
Yes.
Absolutely, that's right. But my, sorry, the point being that the, the court in the, certainly in the Cornish case, and the decision maker that is making the cost award has a regional jurisdiction in the way that this court doesn't. I was.
I'm sorry, I don't really understand that. In Aylesbury, the claim was a claim for judicial review to the divisional court.
Yes.
To quash an order made by the judge in the Crown.
Yes.
So the divisional court must surely have been exercising a supervisory jurisdiction over a decision maker.
Absolutely, that's absolutely correct, my Lord. And I should have caveated my proposition with, I was thinking here really of Cornish.
Yeah.
And I was actually thinking, and why I was thinking of this, was because, for instance, when my Lord, Justice Colson's making the observations that he does in, say, paragraphs forty-three to fifty of the cost decision in Cornish, under the heading "So what went wrong?", and his conclusions in respect of that proposition, in particular, his conclusions at forty-four, that it would be unfair to say that anything went wrong, my Lord, Justice Colson, in that case, was exercising a regional jurisdiction. I should have, I should have made that narrow point, and you're absolutely correct, my Lord, to bring me up on that. The third distinction is this, that the use of expert evidence in planning inquiries is very different to the use of expert evidence in criminal cases. Strict rules of evidence do not apply in a tribunal. In criminal and in civil trials, the use of the expert evidence is an exception, in particular, it is an exception to the rule that opinion evidence is not ordinarily admissible. Expert evidence is only admissible with the permission of the court, and the procedural rules prescribe tightly how that's done and how it's to be adjuduced. In planning inquiries, converse, I agree with the proposition that my own friend began with, that the expert witnesses to a planning inquiry owe their duty to the inquiry. If nothing else, that arises from the professional obligations on them as expert witnesses, from the RICs guidance and the like, which makes that absolutely plain. But also, my Lord said that the PIMs guidance makes that clear as well. But nevertheless, there are key differences. Expert evidence is the norm, as I've made, there's no special rules which apply to it. It applies in the same way with proofs of evidence, and there's no need for commission. My Lord, I would, I think it's a side point, if I may, but I would caution any conclusion by this court without full argument on it as to whether the Cranmerie case and the principles therein apply to tribunal. The Peeberd note, which is in the bundle, appoints that it would not apply, or would be unlikely to apply, I think is the right word. I haven't thought it necessary to address this court on this, because I don't think it's an issue which the court needs to address, but I just wanted to flag that out. Why does that all matter? Well, if it's said that there's a demonstrable, as I understand it is, that there's a demonstrable flaw in Mr. Parsons's reasoning, because he started from the wrong point and didn't ask the question, should it have been obvious that Mr. Hopwood's evidence was flawed? Or in my submission, or plainly wrong, then in my submission, there's no proper basis for that contention, certainly not from the criminal cases.
Well, just to unpack that a bit. We've agreed, I think, that when the council withdrew its support for the development proposal, it had a good reason for doing so, namely, Mr. Hopwood's change of evidence. So the question becomes, was it unreasonable at some earlier time for the council to maintain its support for the development proposal? And I think it's agreed that one of the main planks of the council's support on the proposal was Mr. Hopwood's evidence and the advice that he had previously given the council. So the question then becomes, at what point, if at all, was it unreasonable for the council to continue to rely on Mr. Hopwood's advice? Am I right so far?
With respect, my Lord, I would characterize it differently, but I can, if my Lord wants to carry over with that.
Well, I'm just trying, first of all, I want to try and understand what the correct question is.
Yeah.
So if you don't like my formulation of the question, what is the question?
The question is, was it irrational, in the process sense of that word, for Mr. Parsons to conclude that the failure of the council to call evidence that stood up to scrutiny in the sense of providing a respectful basis for his position was unreasonable?
Well, yes, but then what question is Mr. Parsons asking himself? What is the question for him?
Well, that, in my submission, he was entitled, and we'll come to the conclusion, in my submission, he was entitled to start from the position that where the evidence of Mr. Hopwood had collapsed, to the extent that the council had to withdraw their case, that that was almost prima facie unreasonable to have relied on it, because it doesn't meet the evidential standard, or it could, it can't have met the evidential standard, otherwise the council wouldn't have withdrawn.
It can't have done following the cross-examination.
Yes, absolutely.
But Mr. Parsons took the view, it seems, that there was some anterior moment at which it became unreasonable for the council to continue to rely on Mr. Hopwood's evidence. So what was it?
That's where I differ with respect, with the characterization that there was a particular time that Mr. Parsons had in mind. In my submission, Mr. Parsons started from the premise that if you are going to call expert evidence in support of your case, which then doesn't meet, obviously doesn't meet the evidential threshold, it's evidently, it doesn't meet the evidential threshold because you have withdrawn your case after its cross-examination, that there is, that that prima facie is unreasonable, unless it can be explained to him why it was reasonable, not unless, to call that evidence. He found that there wasn't clear and convincing explanation provided by the council of that. In my submission, that there's nothing unreasonable about Mr. Parsons taking that approach. Indeed, it's perfectly normal, in my submission, in circumstances where there has been a collapse of a case entirely, or a collapse of part of a case, let's say a reason for refusal being withdrawn, that the expectation would be that the party advancing that case would have acted unreasonable, an expectation. It may then be justifiable on the particular circumstances of the case. So, in my respective position, and why I push back at that, I reject respectfully the characterization of Mr. Parsons's decision-making process as though that there was a particular time at which it moved from being reasonable to being unreasonable.
Well, he plainly doesn't, and that's a potential criticism of his entire decision, because he doesn't identify any time.
My Lord, I say he doesn't, it wasn't irrational for him not to have done so. As I say, it was perfectly rational for him to take the view that the starting point is, we're only here. The only reason this inquiry is taking place is because the council supported this development on public safety grounds. They called evidence to do that, that evidence has collapsed.
You made that submission, you made that submission a lot. You don't accept the, my Lord's formulation of it, because that leads to the answer that, that Mr. Parsons did not identify either a time when that happened or why it happened. And you say, well, he was entitled to do that because he was entitled to assume, looking back from the collapse, you look back and you say, well, therefore, prima facie, it must have been unreasonable unless somebody can come up with a reason why it wasn't.
I say that that's not an unreasonable approach to take, absolutely.
Yeah, I understand that. And, but, so that's, that's really the crux of it.
That really is, and I think we've got all the down to that.
And you say you don't have to find a particular time, and Mr. Parsons didn't have to find a particular time, because it's inherent in the whole circumstance that inevitably, at all times before that, the expert evidence was under par, flawed, whatever you like to call it.
Yes, because this is not a.
It was just waiting to be exploded.
It was waiting to be, exactly. Because this is not a, as I said before lunch, if my lone friend, Mr. Hunter, was of the view that this was some peripheral matter that was conceded in cross-examination, he would have pushed on this, or at least he would have been entitled to have done it. It clearly, whatever it was, went to the heart of the evidence he was given on public safety matters, because they felt compelled to withdraw. I think, as Mr. Hunter says, it undeniably the frenetic strength of their case.
Yeah. What I find difficult is to reconcile the submission you are now making with the conclusion that Mr. Parsons came to, that it was not unreasonable for the council to resolve to grant, and that the objections made by HSE were not overwhelming, such as they were wrong in allowing the application to be called in, rather than withdrawing at that point.
The distinction is this, my Lord. That would have called for a judgment on the overall merits, having heard the evidence, or at least that's what Mr. Parsons concluded, and that he was unable to do that because he hadn't heard full evidence in relation to it. That would have been a question of substance. This was a question of process, because having prompted the inquiry by its support for the development, having called evidence in support of that, they then, that being the council, pull that evidence midway through the inquiry. That's a process there, because he doesn't need to go in, he doesn't need to opine as to whether they were right or wrong to pull the, the evidence, or whether he agreed with the answers that Mr. Hopkins had given in his cross-examination. It was the fact that they had been promoting their case, support away expert evidence, and then withdrew that midway through the inquiry. Sorry, my lady, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, don't worry.
I'm sorry, my lady, I certainly didn't mean to cut across the bells. I was going to summarize my submissions, but I think actually that debate has actually, I hope that encapsulated where I am, and at least the court understands, I hope that. But I do want to deal with the policy reasons. I address briefly at paragraph sixty-two to sixty-four of my skeleton argument, page eighteen.
Yes.
And it seems that the central theatre, the heart of the appellate's case, which really underlies ground one, is that, as I say, parties to planning inquiries shouldn't be held liable for the evidence their expert witnesses unless there was some obvious flaw in that. I'd say there are two policy reasons why the court shouldn't accept such a proposition. Before I go on to them, I should say that these don't form the bases for Mr. Parsons's determination. I fully accept that. There are additional points why it would be inapposite, in my submission, to, for this court, to promulgate a general proposition to that effect. And that, the first is that it would drive, maybe too highly, I was going to say, drive a coach and horses to a cross regime, it would certainly substantially affect the cost regime in planning inquiries. I've already made the point that in the vast majority of inquiries, it is expert evidence, expert witnesses, sorry, the vast majority of evidence is given by expert witnesses. Although it doesn't regularly occur, it's not infrequently clear that an expert witness collapses on the stand, and then a reason for refusal is withdrawn. It's more rare that a full case is withdrawn, but it's not that infrequent a reason for refusal is drawn. It's not invariably the case, but often the case that costs are awarded following that event, because the party calling out evidence hasn't substantiated a reason for refusal. And the decision maker doesn't need to go into the judgment about whether they have or have not, and opine on the merits. The very fact that they have withdrawn that element of the case demonstrates to them substantially their reason for refusal. If what was needed was more, that there was a plainly wrong test, that would severely curtail that practice, and I do submit that it would be, it would inhibit the aims of the cost regime, which is that, amongst other things, that the reason should stand up to scrutiny on the planning merits of the case. That can't simply be the case where it's got to a decision and a decision-maker says, actually, that evidence was so poor that, I think this is a cost case. It must also include the case where the evidence was so poor or so flawed that it was withdrawn. Secondly, the second policy point is that, when I read it at sixty-four, and I won't push this too much, but that my lords and ladies will know that since the decision in Jones and Kenyon Supreme Court, the immunity for expert witnesses in giving their evidence in court and tribunals, if it ever existed, no longer exists. And if an expert has been negligent in their advice, if they've been negligent in their advice to the council, or if they've been negligent in their performance on the stand, then it may be in an appropriate case that costs can be recovered from them. The party best placed to recover those costs is clearly the party that's got the contractual relationship with them. It's not a big point, but it's a point in favor of my submission of the approach taken by Mr. Parsons. Granted, adequate reasons is very short. The essential reasoning of Mr. Parsons, in my respective submission, is tolerably clear, as I set out in paragraph eighteen of my skeleton, Mr. Justice Fordham set out in paragraph thirty of his decision. This court will decide whether there's a demonstrable flaw in that reason. We've had a lengthy debate about that. But in my respective submission, it can't be said that if there's no demonstrable flaw, that these reasons don't reach the requisite standard in South Puckston Port. My lords, my ladies, unless I can be of any further assistance?
No, just picking up what Mr. Justice Fordham says in sub-paragraph two, which you quote.
Sub-paragraph two of paragraph thirty?
No, you quoted it in paragraph sixty-five of your certain argument.
Oh.
The way the council had the facilities agreed, they were to appoint its expert witness. Nothing, didn't do anything wrong there.
No.
They appointed an apparently competent expert witness. Satisfy itself with the strength of the expert's advice, where we know the expert advised that HSE's fears were overblown. Satisfy itself that they could rely on its standing up to scrutiny. That's the point that Mr. Parsons made.
Yep.
To ensure it was in a position to prosecute the case through to decision.
That's also Mr. Parsons's point.
That was one of Mr. Parsons's points. And to appraise the position, ensuring its grounds remain, well, that's what it did.
It did. It's the, of those, the penultimate and pre-penultimate obligations which Mr. Parsons found were obligations on the council, which the fact that they failed to do so meant that their actions were unreasonable.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Yes, Mr Hunter, do you wish to reply?
If I may, on, on, I'll read as briefly as it can be. The first point I would like to make is that there seems to be relatively little, if any, distance between my lone friend and myself on the question of what stand-up to scrutiny means in the PPG. Now, as I understood the submission made to the court, he, he referred to it meaning that the evidence had to, there had to be a respectable, present a respectable case, that aligns it with the test in North Norfolk and Wakefield, which was essentially the submission I was making when I was drawing or pointing out the relationship between the aim of the cost regime in paragraph twenty-eight of the PPG and the example of failing to substantiate as an instance of unreasonable behaviour. But the, the second point emerging in relation to that is that that does not assist the Secretary of State's case, because that is not what...
Sorry, that does not what?
Assist the Secretary of State's case, because Mr Parsons did not say that the evidence failed to meet that standard, he refers, so, Mr, indeed, what he is saying, according to the court below, and I believe the Secretary of State now, is simply that the evidence did not pass muster in cross-examination ergo, it did not stand up to scrutiny. But for the reasons I gave this morning, it does not follow, there is a logical gap in that reason, the fact that the cross-examination was successful does not ipso facto mean that the evidence did not present a respectable basis before. And I just, the third point, summing up on it, in fact, it's, what's really notable is that he did not consider the content or quality of Mr Hopwood's evidence at all in his decision. My, the second point relates to the question whether the council should have anticipated Mr Kimlin's cross-examination questions or topics. Again, the same point, that is not what, that is not a flaw identified by Mr Parsons. He, he says it did not satisfy itself or ensure that it would stand up to scrutiny, he does not say how it should have gone about it, so that specific criticism wasn't made. If it, if it had been, one, I don't, it wasn't made by either of the applicant's forecasts, if it had been, there is a straightforward answer, which is that Mr, which I gave earlier, which is Mr Hopwood's was the public safety risk witness, Mr Gibbs was the planning witness, both of them were aware of the evidence on all topics, and, but it is, it, it, obviously different areas of expertise are dealt with by different witnesses, so it's not explained why we had to test Mr, Mr Hopwood's ability to answer planning policy questions when he hadn't ventured any evidence on them, didn't hold himself out as an expert on this, and did not express any disagreement with the position of the council, which he was fully aware of. So, that wasn't an issue raised, but if it had been, that would have been the council's response. The third point is similarly, whether or not Mr, Mr Hopwood's evidence should have been tested, stress-tested in some way, albeit not to the point of coaching, rehearsing, and so forth. Again, that is, that is a gloss on what Mr Hop, what Mr Parsons said, because he doesn't, again, descend into detail as to what the council should have done but failed to do. There is no support for it in the PPG or case law, my lone friend referred to the various guidance, they all suggest that you can ask questions and probe in various ways, but there is not said to be any defined obligation to do so, as the court said, and obviously what is appropriate will vary from case to case, it's left from the advocate's judgment, subject to the restrictions from the bar, the BSB handbook and so forth. More, even more importantly, that, again, that wasn't something which was said to be unreasonable in the applications for costs, so the HSE didn't say, the council, this case fell apart because the council didn't stress-test the evidence, it said its position was unreasonable from the outset. And the, the Veridore were, were simply alleging that, because they had not seen the closed evidence, they were saying it was likely that there was no good reason for the withdrawal when it was. And that's important, because if, if it had been alleged that the, the council made plain in the cost, parts of the cost response I referred to, that it had kept the case under review, again, that's paragraph thirty-five I, page seventeen of the supplementary bundle, that the case had been kept under review, the evidence on both sides had been discussed, its merits considered. If it had been said in addition, well, you may have done that, but you should have gone further and subjected it into some more intensive questioning, we would have had the opportunity to respond to that, but that wasn't part of the case made for the applicant's to permission. The fourth point is the question whether or not it was necessary for Mr Parsons to identify when and why it became unreasonable for the council to rely on Mr Hopwood's evidence. I would respectfully submit in agreement with the propositions put to my lone friend in argument that, that it is necessary to know that, that because we know there was a temporal shift in part, it's inherent in Mr Parsons' own decision, he says it was not unreasonable for you to pursue the case, then it was unreasonable to pursue the case. That obviously begs the question, when and why did it become unreasonable? Without knowing that, we cannot know why we have lost in this, in this part of the litigation.
Can we infer from the fact Mr Parsons awarded costs on the date of the Rule Six statement, that that was the moment?
Well, that, that was a, that was a separate ground of challenge, the, the difficulty with that as well is that that was before the evidence was exchanged, so if the fault is in the evidence, not in the case, so he said, your case is not unreasonable when you resolved to grant permission. He does not explain why it became unreasonable at the point of the statement of case, and my lord, you asked the question this morning, is there any difference between the HSE's position at the time of objection and its statement of case? Similarly, Mr Parsons doesn't grapple with, well, what difference is there between the council's case when it resolved to refuse, to grant permission, and when it set out its statement of case? So he, he, he does not justify that point, and he does not, so he does not justify, explain why it was unreasonable after that point. What I go on to say is, well, my lone friend responded to this by saying, well, he wasn't, it wasn't, he wasn't obliged to do that, all he had to do was give the council the opportunity to explain why it was reasonable to persist with its case and its reliance on Mr Hopwood's evidence. But the council did that, so if I could refer the court back to supplementary bundle, pages twenty-three and twenty-four, paragraph seventy-two and seventy-three, which is the part of the cost response that I alluded to this morning, where the council set out the shape of its case.
So give me the page reference.
So, yes, it's page twenty-three, tab four in the supplementary bundle, going over to twenty, twenty-four.
These are the submissions.
Yes. So, paragraph one explains why we say that the HSE's conflated the, the outcome of the cross-examination with having no reason for...
I think you took us to...
I did, I did take you to this before, but in paragraphs one, two, three to four, the, the council explains why it was relying on Mr Hopwood and why it considered his evidence to support its pleaded case effectively in the statement of case. And Mr Parsons does not engage, again, he does not engage with either the explanation that's given, to say, well, it wasn't reasonable to rely on it for the reasons you gave here, for whatever reason he might have arrived at. And he doesn't address the issue, in fact, he doesn't address the issue at all, again, he doesn't address what it was in Mr Hopwood's evidence that was unreliable, and whether the test is plainly wrong or some other test. As I said this morning, the question is, what fault was there in the council in not appreciating that this evidence would not support its case and it might find itself in the position that it eventually did? Never, never posed, that question is never posed or answered by Mr, Mr Parsons. And that, and that, in my submission, that, that sounds in, in terms of both grounds of appeal, it means there is a logical gap in his reasoning. And it also means that his reasons are inadequate, because they don't grapple with the, an issue that was central to the controversy between the parties and in the end to his decision. Why was the council to blame for what, what Mr Hopwood did and what that caused? And then, I have two other less significant ones, I think, but if I may as well, the perverse incentive point that was raised by my lone lord, Justice Coulson, and my lone friend's answer to that was, well, although, he said it would have been unreasonable for the council to continue with no evidence, now just point out that, that, that is not what would have happened if it had, the council had Mr Gibbs' evidence, so it wasn't a question, it wouldn't have ploughed on with no evidence. The second point I would make is that my lone friend said that the, the PPG provides that costs aren't normally awarded in call-in inquiries on substantive grounds, but the, the wording of the PPG is somewhat different, and its meaning in my submission is different, it says it is not envisaged, that's supplementary bundle, page ninety-four, paragraph... Yes, paragraph thirty-four.
Yeah, so what's the point you're making?
No, my point is, it would, it is not envisaged means, it is not the policy of the Secretary of State to, that costs will be awarded in this, in these circumstances. So there would have had to, it would have been a depart, I'm, I'm not saying that it could not, they could not be awarded, it would have been a departure from policy and would have to be justified. But my final, and...
I haven't, I haven't understood that.
No, I, I think, this is a relatively minor point to say, I, I'm simply to say, my submission is that the...
The is not envisaged point is effectively saying that the principles on which costs are, are awarded don't apply to start to things that have happened before the calling decision.
Yes.
That's all it's saying.
Yes, and so if a decision is made to make a substantive award of costs in a calling inquiry, it is necessarily a, a decision made as a departure from the Secretary of State's guidance.
Why?
Because, because...
If it's made in relation to events that have taken place since the calling?
Because, oh, sorry, because the, my lord, i- if I read the full text, in these circumstances, i.e. in call-in inquiries, it is not envisaged that a party would be at risk of reward of costs for unreasonable rating, unreasonable behaviour relating to the substance of the decision, all action taken prior to the call-in, so there are two...
Oh, I see, you read it disjunctively, just disjunctively then?
Yes, so pre-call-in is completely excluded.
Yeah.
Post-call-in is excluded only in relation to substantive reasonable behaviour.
Yeah.
It is...
Well, that was the point you ran below, which is no longer being pursued, the distinction between procedures.
That he misunderstood, yeah, yes, I'm not running that point, no, I'm just simply saying, my, 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 my more important point is dealing with the question, which is, is there not then a perverse incentive if the approach taken here is upheld? Well, there absolutely is a perverse incentive, because, again, the facts of this case show it, if the council had known that it would end up in this position in this court, having to argue about costs, and it had been asked to make that decision again, do we plough on with just Mr Gibbs' evidence on planning policy and say that Mr Hopwood got it wrong? The balance of considerations would be quite different now, knowing what we know now, as to how the cost decision was made, and if it were upheld, then it would be at the time, well, it was not anticipated that we would be held liable for costs, because if, if the council, i- i- in a case like this where one, can I just draw the court's attention to what was said in the cost submissions on this? The council made clear that it was not conceding that there was anything wrong with the underlying merits of the case, but only that its forensic position at the...
Yeah, you say that in paragraph seven, sub-paragraph four on page twenty-four.
Yes. And that its prospects had been substantially reduced, not eliminated, so it decided on balance, it was not expedient to continue in those circumstances, but if it had known you are likely to have an award of costs made against you if you don't continue, the decision might well have been different. The final point is just to give the court, or, or indicate what might be a useful reference to call, on the question of the standard of irrationality review and its, the varying nature of it. My lone friend cited the SAG decision in the, in, in the bundle. The court raised, however, the question of whether or not there is a varying standard according to the institutional competence of this court to deal with the issue, and I just wanted to draw attention to an authority and give the reference in case it is assistance, and the, the authority is Kennedy and Charity Commission, twenty-fifteen...
Twenty-fifteen, yeah.
Appeal cases forty-five.
What do you say that tells us?
Well, if I can just give, the, the paragraph references are paragraph fifty-three, which are fifty-three and fifty-four in, in, in the judgment of Lord Mans, and it, it refers to an earlier case involving Lord, Lord Carnworth, or Lord Justice Carnes, as he then was called, IBA Heath, and essentially, there's a discussion there about how, one, that the, whether, whether, whether an issue, whether an issue is in the province of the court is one of the relevant factors which affects the intensity of review. And so at one end of the scale, as the court indicated, there are matters of high policy, political judgment or planning judgment. At the other end, there are matters which judges are equipped by training or experience or furnace with the requisite knowledge or advice to decide, where the intensity will be greater. And in my submission, this is such a case in relation to the question of what the, what the expert's duties are, what the party's responsibilities are in relation to the expert's evidence, those are well within the province of the court and appropriate for a higher standard of review than matters of, say, planning judgment on impacts on listed buildings.
So do you say that's different from, or the same as, the approach we would adopt on an appeal in a costs case in civil proceedings, where the judge below obviously has a wide discretion on costs, and we don't interfere with the cost decision unless he's misdirected himself, taking into account things he shouldn't have done, left out of account things he should have done, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I, I cannot confess to having any knowledge really whatsoever of the, the detailed principles governing that situation, but what I would say is, I cannot see why there isn't any analogy where if a judge below had made a similar mistake, what we submit as a mistake here, as to the duties of a party vis-à-vis its expert, then in my submission, yes, the court is in a similar position in its ability to intervene and the intensity with which it should scrutinize that judge's decision. Those are my submissions, unless I can insist further.
I have a question for you.
Mr Hunter, it was a general question, which I was going to ask earlier, so that if, if you disagreed, I'd at least know what the position was. It really arises out of the point that Mr Justice Fordham makes at paragraph five, where he says the decision-maker, Mr Parsons, was not as well-placed as this planning inspector, Mr Sims, would have been. Now, you talked about if you'd ploughed on, if you'd ploughed on and the result had gone against you, who would have decided costs?
The, the inspector.
Yes, so, so the fact that this is a decision-maker who is not the inspector is the result of the withdrawal?
Yes.
That's what I assume.
Yes, that is correct, it's, it's, it's work of the procedure, it is dealt with that way, by the planning inspector.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Mr Williams, do you want to say anything about Kennedy and the Charity Commission? I think that you were...
No, my, we have our submissions on that, and to be fair, my lone friend did alert me to that before lunch, actually perfectly properly.
Right, well, thank you both for your interesting submissions, it's obviously a question that needs a bit of thinking about, so it will not surprise you to learn that we will reserve our judgments. You will get a... Uh, you will get a draft in the usual way, which is your opportunity to correct our English, not our reasoning, or to introduce new points. We would, um, uh, the draft, I should say, comes with an embargo, which means what it says, there's limited distribution on it. And we would hope that in the light of the draft, you will be able to agree an order disposing of the appeal. Uh, if you can't agree a form of order, please make short written submissions and we will make the form of order that we consider to be appropriate. The eventual hand-down of the judgment will be by electronic means plus release to the National Archives. So there will be no need for any further attendance. Thank you both very much.